Ready?
Yeah.
Oh, no? No?
They're all saying?
Yeah.
Yes. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. I will call to order this special meeting and executive session of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. The date is Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. The time is 20, uh, 20, uh, 12:03, sorry. I will start from a board roll call from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Allison Beckham.
Pam Kirby.
Barbara Perleberg. Kim Hartman is out ill this, um, today and possibly joining us later telephonically. Please stand with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My call. Also, we will note that we do have a quorum. I will make a motion that the governing board convene an executive session for the following agenda items. 3A, discussion and consultation for legal advice with the attorney or attorneys for the public body pursuant to ARS Section 38, 431.03a 3 concerning, 1, Arizona School Procurement Code and state law requirements and district policies and practices in connection with retention of architects and other construction-related vendors; 2, cooperative purchasing under the Arizona School Procurement Code and state law; and 3, procedures for release of nonconfidential information pertaining to a report being prepared concerning district procurement practices. Also, Agenda Item 3B, discussion or consultation with the attorneys of the board pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03a 4 in order to consider its position and instruct its attorneys regarding the public body's position regarding contracts that are the subject of negotiations or in contemplated litigation regarding architecture and procurement professional services and construction. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Rebecca. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. We will convene an executive session. You? Good afternoon. Now reconvene our special Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board meeting. The time is 2:12, and we will have again a roll call of the board starting from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Allison Beckham.
Pam Kirby.
Barbara Perleberg. Board Member Hartman is absent today due to illness. We will move directly to Agenda Item 5, possible board legal action regarding report of procurement practices investigation. Dr. Birdwell, would you like to get us started off with Ms. Siegel?
Yeah, actually, governing board, I would ask that you make a motion to waive your legal rights so that Ms. Siegel can actually do a presentation.
And why she brings it up? Yes. Have that up. In a moment, thank you. Hold my printed copy. Thank you. All right. I move to waive the attorney-client privilege of the district except to any legal advice from Ms. Siegel as to future legal action the district may take against any companies or individuals or defenses or remedies the district may pursue. And I move that Ms. Siegel's independent investigation report with exhibits presented in public today be forwarded to the Office of the Attorney General, One GPA, and the Arizona Board of Technical Registration and any other relevant governmental agencies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0.
So, governing board, let me introduce Susan Siegel of Gus Rosenfeld, and she has undertaken a thorough and deep investigation of many of the allegations that we've been listening to in our community regarding procurement. At this time, we'll turn the mic over to her. Welcome to Scottsdale.
Thank you. Happy holiday season. Let me get my things in front of me. My name is Susan Siegel. I'm a partner at the law firm of Gus Rosenfeld. I was retained to do an investigation for two purposes. One, to investigate the district's procurement of the architect firm of Hunt and Caraway, and two, the district's procurement of PGPC and alleged conflicts of interest of an employee of that entity. With respect to Hunt and Caraway, my investigation has also extended to analyzing purchase orders and payments to Hunt and Caraway, as well as the qualifications of the firm and its principals. This report only addresses the procurement of Hunt and Caraway and related matters. I will be issuing a separate report on the issues pertaining to PGPC in January. I also want to say this is just part A of the Hunt and Caraway issue in that I will be back in January to address with the board legal remedies, potential legal action against individuals and corporations and entities with which the district either has contracts or had some sort of relationship in connection with the Hunt and Caraway work or procurement. I will give you a summary of my conclusions. My conclusions are in a report that the board has seen and has before it. I ask that you indulge my, I think, typographical, one or two typographical errors. I will create a narrative to that and have that to you shortly. The summary of my conclusions, and I will also annotate this somewhat with some comments so that the, so that you and the public understands the scope of my investigation. As you can see, there are two volumes of exhibits. They are mostly, are all public record. Some of them have been obtained from One GPA. Some of them have been obtained, are charts that I have done. In the report, I use various abbreviations, which I won't elaborate on now, but I, just to tell you, I've interviewed at least, one, two, three, 10 witnesses. I have submitted numerous questions to One GPA and have received responses either directly or through its attorney. I've had two discussions with Mr. David Hunt's attorney, Wallace Larson. Persons in my law firm have discussed the status of Hunt and Caraway projects at other school districts in Arizona, and I have had a written inquiry to Allison Hosking-Suriano, who I also interviewed. She is an employee of FNG. The reason for my interview will become apparent as I give you my conclusions. She was quite helpful. I did not find any violations of the law in the procurement of the services of Hunt and Caraway through the cooperative purchasing nonprofit corporation called One GPA. However, there are subsequent events that developed that are concerning with respect to amounts billed by Hunt and Caraway to the district for work done, the background and conduct of a principal of Hunt and Caraway, the representation by Hunt and Caraway in the 2013 RFQ that no owner had been convicted of a felony, and the evaluation conducted to choose the construction manager at risk for the three sports fields project and the HoHoCom Elementary School project. As to the selection process for the construction manager at risk, which I just referred to, the law was clearly violated by, as a result of the fact that Mr. Robisho was not a registered architect, and there was no other registered architect on the selection committee. These conclusions are supported by the following facts and findings. One, One GPA complied with the code, the procurement code is what I'm doing, referring to shorthand, that applies to Arizona school districts, and the law in procuring architect services in both 2013 and 2016. And you will hear me come back every once in a while to the 2013 One GPA contract off of which the district could buy and did buy services for Hunt and Caraway until the 2016 RFQ was issued. In connection with the 2016 RFQ, Our One GPA conferred with the Arizona Auditor General and the Arizona Attorney General to ensure that the procurement of architect professional services was correct. For Maricopa County, One GPA picked five firms which its members could choose from. They were ADM, DLR, EMC III, Hunt and Caraway, and Orchid Winslow. I might say that the weighted average placed Hunt and Caraway in the middle of those, that scoring of those five, so it was ranked third. DLR was first, and I'm sorry I have not memorized the order of the rest of them. For the state, a total of 11 firms were chosen. Any of One GPA's over 200-member school districts across the state can pick off of that list of the firms selected for their region. And in fact, Tempe Elementary School District is currently using Hunt and Caraway for projects which it is, which it procured through the same One GPA procurement that this, this district procured Hunt and Caraway with. Next, there is no requirement in the procurement code that applies to school districts that a company reveal felony convictions of a principal in response to a solicitation, although I might add, it is a best practice for the procuring agency to ask, and one that I often recommend. In the 2013 RFQ, One GPA did ask whether any owner of the company had been convicted of a felony, and Hunt and Caraway said no, which at the time, of course, was untrue because Brian Robisho, its president, had, who had 50% ownership in the company at the time, had been convicted of a Class II felony in Arizona in 1998. Tamara Caraway signed off on the company's response to the 2013 RFQ and the 2016 RFQ. She says she did not know of Mr. Robisho's conviction until October 31st, 2017. Mr. Robisho says he did not tell his former employer, Gilliland and Brubaker, or associates that he had been convicted of a felony. However, to me, in my opinion, it seems odd that Mr. Robisho would not have reviewed the response to the RFQ and disclosed the truth. I thus far have found no evidence that Mr. Robisho or the Robisho companies have been debarred by the state of Arizona as a result of his felony conviction for theft, although I have outstanding public records requests right now as we speak to the Arizona State Procurement Office and the Arizona Department of Transportation. In fact, as late as 2016, the Arizona State Procurement Office had selected Hunt and Caraway in a procurement for architect services. That can be found online. Past and present district employees, as well as an outside contractor who is, who is a registered architect, that's Ms. Hosking-Suriano, say that they did not know that Mr. Robisho was not a registered architect or that he was a convicted felon. The law does not require that a principal in an architect firm be a registered architect, but he cannot resent, represent, I'm sorry, that he is one. On at least two occasions, and I suspect more occasions, Mr. Robisho represented he was an architect, two persons related to the district, which could cause any layperson to believe meant that he was a registered architect. Ms. Caraway stated she did not know Mr. Robisho was not a registered architect until after she bought into the company in 20, in December 2011. The question arises as to whether Hunt and Caraway misrepresented the fact that Mr. Robisho was not a registered architect. As to the architect drawings, Ms. Caraway's seal as, as a registered architect appears on the plans that Hunt and Caraway has drawn for the district, so there is no fault there. However, although Hunt and Caraway's response to the 2013 RFQ and the 2016 RFQ does not state he is a registered architect, but a layperson might have assumed so. Next, the fact that Mr. Robisho is not a registered architect is relevant because the code, the procurement code, requires that in selecting a construction manager at risk, one of the members of the selection committee be an architect or engineer who is registered pursuant to ARS Section 32-121. Mr. Robisho was a member of the selection committees for the construction manager at risk for the three sports fields project, and that's an abbreviation in my report, but it refers to the improvements to the sports fields at Chaparral, Coronado, and Saguaro High Schools. And the HoHoCom Elementary School projects. Members of the selection committee for those projects and the facilitator assumed Mr. Robisho was a registered architect and proceeded with the selection without another registered architect. In other solicitations, Allison Hosking-Suriano of FNG was present. When Ms. Hosking-Suriano could not be there due to a serious family illness, her partner, who is not a registered architect or engineer, attended. Ms. Hosking-Suriano said that she assumed the facilitator, who represents, she is an expert in procurement, would have ensured that a registered architect would be present, and the law would be followed because that was her job. Again, this is, the, the reason the law was not followed is because the Arizona School Procurement Code at election, at section 1107 requires that a registered architect be on the selection committee. Everyone thought Mr. Robisho was a registered architect. Of course, Mr. Robisho knew he wasn't, and there wasn't a registered architect for those particular two procurements. There is evidence that the district has been overbilled by Hunt and Caraway in a significant amount, although the exact amount is still to be determined. Hunt and Caraway has charged the district a percentage, 7%, that was higher than the percentage in its final fee schedule submitted in response to the 2016 RFQ for at least three projects. Now, I did not analyze HoHoCom or the Catering Kitchen Project because those have been suspended at the time. As recently as, oh, I'm sorry, back up. I need to add something. When I discovered the fact that the court, in the course of this investigation, and asked both Mr. Robisho and Ms. Caraway about this, they insisted, and this was December, last week, December 9th and before, that 7% was the right amount. As recently as December 11th, Ms. Caraway sent the higher fee schedule to Dr. Birdwell, who demanded to know what had happened. However, I have not yet, they have now agreed to, they verbally agreed, Ms. Caraway through her attorney, to adjust its charges and bills to comport with the terms of the One GPA contract. However, I've not yet received written confirmation nor the adjusted charges that Hunt and Caraway claims it's owed. Moreover, I recommend that the district hire an outside architect to further assess what amounts should have been and will be paid. This expertise is necessary because it will require an assessment of the complexity of the work and the cost of construction as defined by the fee schedule and the One GPA contract with Hunt and Caraway. I will digress just a moment and tell you what happened, because this is an important part and, and could have resulted in the district being overbilled hundreds of thousands of dollars. What happened is that in the course of the procurement by One GPA in 2016, each vendor submitted a fee schedule. The 20, the, the president of, or I think the executive director of One GPA responded to Hunt and Caraway and said, "Well, I instructed you to keep it very similar, your fees similar to what the school facilities board has in its schedule, which is also posted online and in your, in your exhibits." They received a response back. It still wasn't right, and then they got a response from Ms. Caraway on April 4th, 2016, who, who submitted what was their third fee schedule. That, by that fee schedule, this district would have been paying 6% of the construction cost for the three projects right now that are in play. Instead, the company, Hunt and Caraway, has been billing you 7%, and there has been no determination of the exact construction cost. As to who is responsible for overbilling based upon the wrong fee schedule, I think it's principally Hunt and Caraway. However, past and present employees should have verified the correct percentage or hourly rate before paying or signing off on a PO or paying an invoice. I want to add that the timing is important. As you go through the, you go through the records, you see many of these invoices were signed in 2016 and early 2017 by employees that are no longer here. Hindsight is 2020, given what has occurred, but this is a prudent practice, even if this, even if there's not a foundation to question the veracity of Hunt and Caraway. I also recommend review of billings of any other contractors hired off of the One GPA contract. Finally, if One GPA has not already done so, I recommend it ensure that its member districts are aware of the fee schedules for each approved vendor. The fee schedules are attached to the exhibits. I obtained them from One GPA. The fee schedules were not in the records so far as we could find of the district. I do believe One GPA, as well as Hunt and Caraway, bears responsibility for these problems. Hunt and Caraway had a duty of good faith and fair dealing to the district. They should have been on top of and billed the correct amounts to the district. The pre-election work by Hunt, the next point, the pre-election work by Hunt and Caraway was procured through two RFQs, one in 2013 and one in 2016. This complies with the code. A number of allegations have been made as to pre-election work that have caused persons to question the validity of charges for the work and the hiring of Hunt and Caraway. Because of the plethora of speculation and conjecture that has occurred in both the district and the community, I believe it is productive to address specific questions that have been raised about the pre-election work. I might add, at the end of your report is a chart, a timeline for the pre-election work. It shows what work was allocated to the 2013 procurement and what work was allocated to the 26th procurement. I think part of the confusion is that some have assumed that the February work, or the February purchase orders, were not procured correctly. Well, they were. They were procured under the 2013 RFQ. So, I'm going to address some specific questions that have been raised about the pre-election work. First, the master plan analysis, the so-called quote, "master plan analysis." The POs reflect that Hunt and Caraway were doing a master plan analysis. Hunt and Caraway analyzed past master plans developed by the previous administration in 2013, 2009, and 2008. Some of those master plans are attached, attached in a thumb drive to your exhibits. They are very voluminous. They basically went through what, at the time, in 2013, the district then administration believed was needed for your buildings and your facilities. Hunt and Caraway analyzed those past master plans, and it also analyzed a demographic study by THK and a facilities assessment by FNG. There was no separate document prepared as a 2016 master plan. The absence of a separate new document does not indicate fraud or misuse of funds. In early February, THK and FNG were hired by Hunt and Caraway, not by the district. The selection of these firms thus in early February does not fall within the code. An issue has been raised about the timing due to a letter on February 2nd, 2016, from THK to Mr. Robisho. There is nothing illegal or wrong about a contractor, Hunt and Caraway, asking a subcontractor what its costs will be in order for the contractor to quote a price to the client, which in this case was the district. The whole financial system depends upon the district cutting a purchase order before it expends money. It needs to know what to cut that purchase order for ballpark, and it's not unusual that this type of inquiry takes place. I have two questions, at least, about though, about some of this work that was done. There is a invoice in the files that may have the wrong date. It appears it has the wrong date and may have been allocated in part to the wrong One GPA procurement. This was approved by a past employee of the district. This appears to be caused by Hunt and Caraway's error, but also the error of the past employee. While this may be of interest to auditors, it is not illegal. I also have a question about the rates and bill, and charges billed for the work done by Hunt and Caraway. I have requested from Hunt and Caraway and their attorney a specific itemization from, of these charges. If you will recall, or maybe you don't, but it's in the documents that Hunt and Caraway made a proposal to Dr. Birdwell, which was based in part upon hourly rates. And when I compared those hourly rates to the 2013 hourly rates, there seemed to be about a $10 discrepancy in some of them. Past and current employees of the district say they were not coerced by any other district employee to choose Hunt and Caraway. For example, Mr. Worcester says that although he does not think he was treated fairly when his employment contract was not renewed, he was not his employment contract was not renewed, he was not coerced by anyone to select Hunt and Caraway, either when he was on the team that evaluated the One GPA proposals, or when he was working with Mr. O'Brien and Dr. Birdwell. Past and current employees deny they received anything of value that would or did affect their, their decision to select Hunt and Caraway. Nor did any past or current district employees say they saw or, or have evidence of any other employee receiving such gifts or benefits. Of course, I have no power to subpoena bank records of individuals or companies unless there is an ongoing lawsuit, and even that power on the civil side is limited. It would be up to the Attorney General to determine what action to take. I want to add that just because Mr. Robichaux, the president of the company, had a conviction does not necessarily invalidate the Hunt and Caraway contract. We are, that's late, for a later day for me to give you legal advice on that, but I wanted to touch upon that fact. Secondly, I want to talk a little bit about what, what bodes in the future. First of all, the sale of general obligation and refunding bonds. Monies used to pay Hunt and Caraway and other construction-related contractors after November of 2016 were derived in part from proceeds of the sale of general obligation bonds. The source of repayment of those bonds is ad valorem property taxes levied by the district. A sale of bonds occurred already in March of 2017. The district expects to issue general obligation bonds and refunding bonds tomorrow, December 20th. The existence of this investigation has been disclosed in a supplement to the official statement for the 20, December 20th sale, and it was disclosed last week. Secondly, there is currently an investigation being conducted by the Office of the Arizona Attorney General of several matters pertaining to procurement and conflicts of interest. I have met with and discussed this matter with attorneys from that office. I have told them that I would provide them with my report and all documents if the board allowed me, which is what you just authorized me to do. So tomorrow, they, the report will be delivered to the Office of the Arizona Attorney General. In addition, I wanted to add that because there are implications for an individual representing that he or she is a registered architect or an architect without registering, the Board of Technical Registration would be interested in knowing about these, and that's why I believe your motion asked me to refer this report to that board. Discussion about future legal action is in the future. This is not the, this is just the beginning phase and may take, it will be discussion about any action that the district may take against companies or individuals, or defenses or remedies the district may pursue in the future. That discussion consists of confidential and privileged attorney-client communication. Therefore, I will present my legal advice and analysis to the board in a future executive session. If the board decides to take any legal action, of course, that will be done and open. I will take any questions. I know it's a lot to digest, so. I've been living with this for three weeks, so. Yes, ma'am?
Board Member Krebitz. Um, would you, for the benefit of the people watching at home or here in our audience, could you please give us a little bit of background of your legal expertise and your experience of these related issues?
I, all right, let's see, let's start. I've been an attorney since 1979. In 1984, right, 1982 to 1984, I worked at the Office of the Arizona Attorney General, writing Attorney General opinions on school law and other issues. Also, during that time, I was asked to be one of four members who drafted the Arizona Procurement Code, which is the code that applies to all state agencies and is administered by the State Procurement Office. It all, there is a, was a mandate in 1984 that that code be adopted in substantially similar form by the Arizona Board of Education, which it did in 1987. I did not participate in that one, but I did participate in its, I guess its mother lode in 1984. Since then, I have been working in, mostly in private practice at the law firm August Rosenfeld, where I've represented school districts throughout the state. I would say my, my expertise is in, mostly in procurement and also in employment law. While I was at the AG's office in 19, in the 1980s, and then again, in recently, I was on the open mean law enforcement team, and I wrote a number of opinions about school law and quarums and other applicable law. I've litigated cases, including the Flores case involving student, school finance and ELLs. I've litigating, litigated another school finance case involving equity issues. And I, that's about all, you know? I have a
Thank you.
Pretty long career, longer than I want to admit. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm waiting for a yes or no.
Board Member Beckham?
Okay. I think I will go ahead and say this because, for, for the benefit also of the people out there, because I think the, one of the questions that came up was the relationship you have with the district. And I feel comfortable with the fact that although you've had other work with the district, that is correct?
I have.
That you've been very transparent about that, and that with the reputation of Gus Rosenfeld and yourself, that I believe that we were comfortable with you doing this investigation for us, and that you would be fair and just and, and bring the facts to us. And it appears that that is what you've done, and this component of it is to bring the facts, and I want to thank you for the documentation behind it, especially the timeline, because I think that that helps me, I know personally, to really see some of the, that there were some discrepancies put out by people that weren't aware of the differences between the different, the 2013 and the 2016 One GPAs. And the timeline really does help with that, so I want to thank you for making it as visually clear as possible.
Well, thank you. I'm a former school teacher, so I always know the, the value of a visual chart. I want to also assure the board that no individual in the district has put pressure on me to say something or do something or conclude something. And in fact, I, if they tried, I, it wouldn't do any good. So, but it hasn't occurred. I've been allowed to ask the tough questions, to ask the rough questions, and I appreciate the assistance of the Ms. Marshall in facilitating interviews with individuals.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. And to that point, was the district cooperative in any documents that you requested to see?
Ms. Kirby, yes, absolutely. I, are the documents in the, the order I would like to them, you know, everybody has their way of doing things, no? But the procurement files that Mr. Gonzalez has are very concise. The, the problem I had principally was the, was that pricing sheet. Because of the 6% versus the 7%, I had to obtain that pricing sheet from One GPA. I don't know why the, we couldn't find it in the district. The district did have the wrong pricing sheet. Mr., I questioned Mr. O'Brien as to whether he had seen it. He said he had not when he left. We don't know, it's somewhat of, I put in there, it's somewhat of a mystery as to how it appeared, but the right pricing sheet was not there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing at all. Just want to clarify Board Member Beckham's comments about Gus Rosenfeld and the separation of what, what your work for us has been, and then a separate department that has, has done additional work, correct?
Mr. Gill is your assigned bond counsel. He's in a different department. Of course, we're all the same law firm. I will tell you, though, that the amount the board, or the amount that the law firm of Gus Rosenfeld, or any bond counsel you would hire, is in the custom in the industry is based upon the face value of the bonds. It is not based upon the price, which might go up or down depending upon something catastrophic happen. The other part is, that I want to point out, is that your bonds are secured by ad valorem property taxes. The type of significant event that would have an effect, most typically, I'm not foreclosing others, would be, for instance, if you had a major taxpayer, an Apple manufacturer, in your district boundaries that up and pulled out, and you lost that tax base. That is the type of event that would have influenced the sale, could have influenced the sale of the bonds. Thus far, this, this disclosure has been out to the purchasers who are going to purchase your bonds tomorrow at the sale for over a week, and there has been no inquiry or, nor has there been any change in, in the percentage price or anyone wanting to get out of it.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to add that I agree your work has been very thorough, very unbiased, has, has left me definitely with a, a strong sense of confidence
Thank you.
in, in what's been done. Retracing history is never easy, and to have to kind of go back this far and deal with past employees that are no longer here, plus and, and current, try and put all the puzzle pieces together, I commend this work that you've done. It's incredibly impressive. And also thank all of our staff, past and present, that, that cooperated and worked well with you and, and gave us this much clearer picture. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we have made our action, we have made our vote and action item, I think, for this, and if there's no other questions or comments, we're ready to move forward.
And I, I will see you in January with regard to the second, maybe, second of, maybe three or four parts, as to the future action you may take concerning Hunt and Caraway.
Thank you.
Safe travels and happy holidays.
Thank you, yes. Safe travels.
Okay. We will then move on to our next agenda, item six, consent item. I would like to at this time make a motion to postpone Consent Items 6A and B to a future meeting and approve the consent agenda as amended. Do I have a second?
Second. Thank you. Board Member Kirby, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero. We then move on to our Action Item 7A, Approval of Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP number two.
We get it approved.
C.
I'm sorry.
Enter the consent.
That was in my motion, to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Oh, okay.
That was in my motion, sorry.
Oh. We didn't.
I'm pretty sure. Okay, that was there. So that is approved. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 7A, Approval of Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP number two for RFQ number 17081, Construction Manager Risk Services for the New Rebuild Project at Hopi Elementary School.
At this time, Mr. Hartwell will present the material and the update to the governing board.
Thank you, President Phil Berg, the governing board, Dr. Birdwell and Sandra. If you'll just give me one moment, let me just bring this one up. My favorite subject. Well, thank you for the opportunity to come and, and discuss this with you today. I wanted to, and I wanted to go through a little bit of history with you on, on GMPB1, because it's been some time since you've approved GMP1. And so what I'd like to do today is to just give you a refresher. And then the second part is I'm going to go through an existing budget.
It's like a full screen so they can see it a little better. Now, all you have to do is push the arrow over there.
You got it, got it. And then the, the last portion of it is, of course, is going to be, I'm sorry?
Do you need any of this back?
No, no. No, 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 I'm good. Is, is going to discuss GMP2 with you, which is what's on the table that I'm looking forward to an approval for this evening. So if you remember in June, on June 12th, we, we had approval from you for 2.9 to do GP, GMP1. GMP1, we constructed fence areas, we installed, did temporary irrigation, overhang on one section of the building, we, we actually removed and did abatement. We removed place structures, demoed the site, rough grading, building pads, classroom and admin were complete, fire line was installed, which was just recently done, and an agreement for the community and access and egress was only just completed last week, and that was at Rubicon. And the issue was, when, when parents came out, out of that particular area, we wanted to make sure that they didn't interfere with access going directly across the street. So, so I will have to say to the city, it was very instrumental in working through that process. So I want to give you some ideas of some things that's happened. So we haven't been stable. We, we've just have continued on with the construction in GMP1. This is actually the end of the existing gem that we demoed, and the top portion of it here, you'll see, this is when they started, and then we had to seal this at, at the end of it. A little bit sensitive here, sorry. There we go. So we had, had a lot of discussion, and we've had some calls from, from folks saying, "Look, there's, there's a lot of heavy equipment and what have you." Well, it was a great deal of grading, and, and so much grading. We had several, several loads of dirt that had to be excavated and actually taken out to put it at the elevation that the civil engineers wanted us to put that at. And this is actually where we, where we secured the water line just last week, and actually brought that over to the property, and this is going to help us with, with the security and water systems for, for the building itself. So kind of the bottom line is, while we've been working through this, there's been a lot of work activity to try to get started in through GMP1. So what I'm, what I'm sharing with you now is a matrix that we, we've just put together that gives you every element such as procurement, architectural fees, C Mar, GMP1, GMP2 permanent fees and others, and then FFNE at the bottom, which is furniture, fixture and equipment. If you take a look across at the top, we have an existing budget, which, which you're familiar with. We started out procurement at 19 million, architectural fees at 1.4, and as you go all the way down to 22 million. And then we have an actual column, and every month, on every project, we'll update this based on what we present to you in the bond update. So every month, this will change based on the work, activities in the billing that we've gotten per project. So in this one, for example, the procurement in total was 10,000. We had a budget of 19. There will not be any more, any further procurement in that area. We had architectural fees of 1.204 and so on, and so the total actual is 1.5. And then we have adjacent ways, which we've had several discussions on, and adjacent ways is actually included in GMP1, and it's included in GMP2. So what we did was, we put the funding source, if you notice the columns in the, in the line, oh, sorry. Too sensitive. Almost stopped. Adjacent ways, bond, capital override, and other capital funds is actually your funding sources, okay? So within those funding sources, if you take a, if you combine your adjacent ways, it's 966,000. And then if you take a look at the funding source for the bond, which, and what areas it comes out of that, whether it's procurement or the architectural fees, or the construction costs, and in this case, you have a GMP1 at 2.17, you have GMP2, which is coming up, reflecting at 16.7. reflecting at 16.7, but if you look at the budget, it's 6.988, which is what I'm going to share with you here in just a few minutes. And then the FF and E fee, of course, you'll see that's for furniture fixtures and equipment, is at 800,000. So there was a question, someone asked me just recently, what is in other direct costs? Well, other direct costs is your third-party asbestos, clearing, air monitoring, OFNI, which is owner fixtures and owner install, appliances, Southwest Gas, and also IT fits into that category. So for today, what I'm asking the board to approve is the final GMP2 to construct the final stages of Hopi Elementary School, and that total contract amount is 16.988366.
Any comments? Board Member Kirby?
I'll just make a comment. Thank you for the presentation, and I'd like to thank yourself, and Ms. Smith, and Board Member Beckham. The four of us spent time yesterday. Actually, most of it was, a lot of it was helping me understand quite a bit of this, so I want to thank everyone for their tutelage in tracing these costs back and making sure that we tied to prior documents, and helping me understand where these numbers are all coming from. So I have no questions today, unless there's new information presented, because this is consistent with what I saw yesterday.
Any other comments? Board Member Beckham?
Can you go back to the slide that shows the chart? I just want to make one point here, that under the budget, several of these are contract-based, the architectural fees and design, the CMAR pre-construction, the GMP1, and then the GMP2 will also be, those are the definite numbers from contracts that are either signed and approved and signed, or the GMP2 would be if it gets approved today.
Yes, Board Member?
I just wanted to kind of put that fact out there, and that FF and E is an estimate for that budget, and that's how we arrived at, based, excuse me, based upon historical information that we have about what furniture fixtures and equipment would need to go into Hopi, so that when the doors open, it is completely equipped and ready for the students. So that we finally have one total number down there, the 22,718. And then I just want to skip to where you showed the colored portion, just to say that those are the sources of funds that would go to pay, so that sometimes it gets confused that the whole bond is going to pay the 22 million. And so we really thank you to Mrs. Kirby, broke it out into the four different types of funding that is available to this district, and I really want to thank you, because I think that gives a concise picture of what we've been trying to see. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Board Member Beckham, because it actually cleared up some things for me too, because Board Member Kirby has said before, where's the revenue? And I'm thinking business terms, but what we're really talking about is sources of funds, you know? So that was clarity for me too, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. I too appreciate the hard work, all the hard work that has gone into understanding this rebuild and the commitment that you all have shown to our students and this district as we have worked very hard to move forward, so appreciate that. This time then, if there's no comments or questions, do we have a motion?
I motion.
Yes. Sorry. Board Member Travis?
I motion that we approve the guaranteed, am I reading this correctly, the guaranteed maximum price, GMP Number Two for RFQ Number 17081, Construction Manager at Risk Services for the new rebuild project at Hopi Elementary School.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much.
You all. This time, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moves.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. Second. Thank you, Board Member Beckham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero.
Happy holidays, safe travel.
You too.
Go spend time with your families.